Item five E. Make me a motion to approve the regular in consent agendas as amended. Holly seconded it. All those in favor? Five, recognition and information.
Garner.
I would like to introduce Nina Day. She is an experienced social education teacher this time having to us come in Rovia. She has an interesting story because she started her career in criminal justice and then just had some heart and passion for this that she decided to be into stuff like this. So we are excited to have her here at South.
I have some myself. So first of all, I want to welcome Amanda Gibney. Please stand, please. Amanda, we approved in our last special session at the end of June. She is our Fillmore. We're so excited to have her on board. Fillmore Elementary School Principal. Says extensive background in education professional development and teaching and curriculum development, educational technology integration, instructional design and coaching, STEM integration, grant writing, and just a little list just goes on and on. We're just so thrilled to have her on board and so I just wanted to welcome you tonight. Thank you for coming. Next, I'd like to welcome Joanna Muncie. Joanna is going to be our Assistant Principal. She's a brand new newly created position at Central Elementary. We're excited to have her. She has a background in elementary education, educational initiatives, response intervention, RTI, and many of you know that terminology. Very proactive, communicative, extensive parental involvement as well, and then obviously her elementary school administrative experiences. So I just want to welcome Joanna here tonight and just thank you and looking forward to some great things at Central. You're welcome. And last but not least is, you have so many titles, Terry. Over the last 30 years, this is my privilege tonight to recognize Terry Beasley. Your latest title here as Business Operations Coordinator and Executive Assistant to me and Superintendent. Tonight, we had a great recognition and celebration next door. It's great to see all, everybody there, just to recognize in such a, a treat that Terry has been to our district for the last 30 years. It's just, basically, the amount of people and the people coming through is just a reflection of her dedication to South Putnam and her ever so kind spirit that you just, if you know Terry, you know what I'm talking about. But Terry, I just wanted to take this moment to wish you nothing but the best and your much deserved rest and the time spent with Jeff and your family and all your friends. And I know, and it's just like the Super Bowl, hey Terry, you're, you're just retired. Where are you gonna go? Disney World. But thank you so much for all your service. It's been a pleasure working with you. You've been my right hand since I started. So thank you very much for everything you've done at South Putnam and for me. Thank you.
And I get the distinct honor of presenting you, Terry, with your PUPPEY Award. And personally, I would like to say that Terry was here my first year as a teacher and I've been to other corporations and she has been by far the very best secretary I could ever have hoped to have in the office because I'm kind of a, I'm kind of a pest sometimes. And she was always nice to me and answered my questions. Anyway, thank you so much, Terry, because I do put a lot of heart into this.
Okay. Financial update, Dr. Smith.
Yeah, in your packets, you receive the latest financial reports, including cash flows, fund reports. As reflected in those reports, we continue to track positively with our targeted income, expenses, and cash balances. As we approach this new school year, we'll continue to proactively monitor and adjust as needed as we move into our next projects.
Right. Item six, public comments. Do we have any? Item seven, new business. A, consideration of teacher appreciation grant or the tag policy.
In your packets, you received the latest financial, oops. Whoops, wrong thing. My bad. Basically, every year, we have to re, re-approve our teacher appreciation grant policy and this is just another one of those years. Policy's working just, just fine and so we're going to continue with that with some modified tweaks with the new legislation. So the way we compensate teachers and everything with that tag money is going to be similar to what we've done.
Any discussion? Question?
Holly made the motion to approve the teacher appreciation grant policy.
Holly made the motion to approve the teacher appreciation grant policy. Wade seconded it. All those in favor? Seven B, consideration of classified employee benefits and compensation.
As provided in your board packets, we're seeking approval tonight for the updated classified employee benefits and compensation. We're continually working to improve the compensation for our hardworking classified staff members, but we also continue to work to streamline and update the benefits packages and the benefit structure within those. The included compensation benefits package is the culmination of several months of effort in putting this together and from, and from getting feedback from all areas of the district and running multiple scenario testing as well. So with that information, we're just seeking approval of the employee benefits and compensation in your board packets.
Questions or discussion?
I move to approve the classified employee benefits and compensation.
Holly seconded it. Wade made the motion to approve the classified employee benefits and compensation. He seconded it. All those in favor? Abstain. Seven C, consideration of Central Elementary parking lot resurfacing bid.
On June 19th, we received one bid for the Central Elementary parking lot project. Unfortunately, it was well beyond our budget amount for that project. Due to the lack of compensation and the time requested, we seek action this evening to reject the bid. We will recalibrate this, this project and rebid it later this fall for a summer 2024 completion.
Questions or discussion?
I move to reject the June 19th, 2023 bid for the Central Elementary parking lot project.
Joe made the motion to reject the June 19th, 2023 bid for the Central Elementary parking lot project. Holly seconded it. All those in favor? Okay. D, consideration of Neola agreement.
As you all are very aware, Neola provides our board policy, monitoring, evaluation processes, updating, and publishing services that assist us in maintaining our policies to reflect timely legislature and legal actions. So therefore, this evening, we're just seeking approval of the updated agreement for services with Neola so we can continue to keep our policies updated.
Questions or discussion?
I move to approve the agreement with Neola.
Holly made the motion to approve the agreement with Neola. Joe seconded it. All those in favor? Item E, consideration of 2023 project action items, number one.
With that, Barclay, you're on.
All right. Go over here and be all official. So we have three different resolutions that need to be considered tonight. The first one's short, sweet, to the point. We need a resolution that is determining that there is in fact a need for our project.
Okay, so then we're on to make a motion to approve the project, right?
Yes.
So does anyone have any questions? When that happens? And we'll vote on each one of these before you go to the next one. Okay.
I move to approve the resolution determining the need for the project.
Holly made the motion to approve the resolution determining the need for the project. Joe seconded it. All those in favor? Questions, Harry?
Okay. So our second one is about approving the form of the Sixth Amendment to lease. Essentially, we have now had several agreements with what is called the South Putnam High School Building Corporation in 1990, 1992, 2002, 2013, 2017, 2021. What this resolution is meant to do is to amend that lease to allow the High School Building Corporation to become a part of this project and perform its role of in fact receiving proceeds and making sure everyone gets paid appropriately and at the right times.
Okay, so what about if the project stretches into the, the elementaries then? Do they not have to be included?
No, they're, the building corporations just have to have a name. So there used to be one that was called the 2003 and there was one that was the Central and there was one that was the Elementary and we've basically gotten rid of all of them and we're just using the high school because otherwise we have to track, you know, four or five different building corporations and it can be very difficult. So we've moved back just to.
Okay, so just because it has high school in the title doesn't mean that it doesn't include the whole corporation?
It just has to have a name, but it can include everything in the corporation.
Just need to clarify that. Okay. Do any of you have questions or anything?
I move to approve the resolution approving form of Sixth Amendment to lease.
Joe made the motion to approve the resolution approving form of Sixth Amendment to lease. Wade seconded it. All those in favor?
Okay, so our last one is actually for the building corporation to issue these tax exempt laws that we're pursuing. The IRS does require that you, as the school board, approve the building corporation to issue the taxes and laws on your behalf. So this is essentially reapproving them to be the entity that you work with on the project. And I do have a list of members if you need it. I think we may have to update one.
So it's the same group that we used the last time we did this, right?
Yes.
And when you say with the exception of one, does that mean we just, one has dropped off or?
We may have all of them, but I, I need to confirm still with one of them that they still want to be on the board.
Oh, okay. And then what's that process to get someone if they are choosing not to?
There are some names I'll request actually from Cory to confirm that they're acceptable slash meet the requirements.
Okay, but that doesn't require us to, okay.
So we'll deal with that next month if we have to. You'll basically approve us having gotten additional member to replace whoever it was.
Okay, we have to approve that before we can even have those discussions.
Yeah, because right now, they're, they're not really in existence exactly. We have to approve them coming back in.
Okay.
I move to approve the resolution, reapproving formation of the building corporation.
One second. Joe made the motion to approve the resolution reapproving the formation of building corporation and Holly seconded it. All those in favor?
All right, that was it.
Thank you.
All right, one more technical with time for you.
Right. Item F, second reading of corporation policy.
Well, stated, tonight designates the second reading of the policies found in your board packets, which we presented our first reading last month. Working together with Neola, we continue to craft and update policy that meet the legal and legislative requirements for school corporation. There's no action on the second reading. We'll take action in the next agenda item.
Okay, do any of you have any discussions on any of them? Or comments or anything? Well, if you don't mind me taking just a few things.
I was going to say, nice, nice work in reviewing those because just, just reviewing those.
Yeah.
Myself, I went cross-eyed twice.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, and there's more to come.
Yes.
Okay, so I just, I just wanted to make a note for all of us on some of these. The web accessibility and content, the 7540.02. I had just talked with Cory about it, that there is, I just want to make sure that there's training for not only our, it's on the back, well, at the very end, there's a training section. And I just wanted to make sure that we have, that we're providing training not only for our teachers, which I know the administrators are doing, but also for like the IAs that work in the media, you know, like when you go to computer time as an elementary, you know, just that they're aware of all the stuff that's going on. It's all of that. Policy 7540.02. That's, that was in the volume 35. And then there was one, 3231, outside activities of staff. And just so our teachers are aware of that, if they choose to publish something, there are a lot of websites that, you know, teachers can get things already published, but that they can also put things in to publish and sell. And so that specifically states that if they do it on our school time, that then we own it. So. Then, oh, just a reminder to all of us. The revised, oh, but this is in 35. 0164.5, member participation in meetings through electronic means of communication. That's another one that's changed a lot. And I would just like to remind us all that we have, if we're going to participate according to the policy as virtually, that we have to give the president and the superintendent 48 hours prior notice just so they can get those set up. There were some other things that, in the outdated ones, that linked to the handbooks that that's been taken care of. So I checked on that. Yeah, and that included the elementary handbooks and the, and the middle school, high school handbook. And with that, all the legislative stuff that's going on, both of it, I just wanted to make sure that both of the handbooks, both at the elementary level and the middle school, high school, had a disclaimer that whatever policies we have overrides whatever's in the, in the handbooks. Because we only do that, you know, the administrators only update them once a year and this is already, yeah, anyway. So there's that. I thought the 2281, parent and family engagement was interesting. So I talked to Dr. Smith about that and we're already doing some things, which I was happy to hear. That one we've done. Okay. Does anyone else want to add anything or mention any? All right then, we'll move on to G, consideration of approval of corporation policy.
Well, we've concluded the second reading of the policies. We seek approval of those policies so we can notify Neola to publish as approved.
Discussion or question?
If not, I will make a motion with a slight change embedded within it. I move to approve the corporation policies with the exception of policy 1240, choosing option two instead of option one.
Second. 1240. Okay, so Joe made the motion to approve the policies as amended with the exception of 1240, going with option two rather than option one. And Wade seconded that. Any discussion or clarification or anything? All those in favor? Okay, consideration of middle, high school student handbook.
As we move closer to the school year, we seek to provide updates to all of our handbooks, which were provided in your board packets. Tonight, we are seeking approval for the updated middle school, high school handbook as presented.
Well, I, I've said this before and I would like to say it again. I really appreciate the time and effort that the administrators for the middle school, high school handbook put into the revisions this year. As I told Mr. Scomp, it was almost a pleasure to read through it. But it was, it was very clear and very concise and it was, I, I knew exactly what I was reading and I really appreciated that. Any other discussion?
I move to approve the middle school, high school student handbook.
Wade made the motion to approve the middle school, high school student handbook. Joe seconded it. All those in favor? All right, consideration of SRO MOU.
This may seem like deja vu, but we're seeking approval again of the updated School Resource Officer MOU with the town of Cloverdale and Cloverdale Community School Corporation. After another round of attorney changes, we needed to approve this new version. The town in Cloverdale have already approved this version and we're ready to move into the hiring process. So I appreciate your patience and cooperation through all of this, but this, we get this approved tonight, we can move on and get someone SRO hired.
Questions? Question?
Looking forward to closure on this consideration.
Aren't we all?
I, I move to approve the School Resource Officer MOU.
Second. Joe made the motion to approve the School Resource Officer MOU. Wade seconded it. All those in favor? Consideration of elementary handbook.
Yeah, this is an add. You already approved the version, a, a version of this handbook earlier this year. We just needed to add a couple of updates regarding nursing and a couple of number changes in the food services category. They were, they were updated red in your packets. Everything else remained the same. We just seek approval of this updated version tonight so we can get ready for students.
Questions or discussion?
I move to approve the elementary student handbook.
I'll second it. Joe made a motion to approve the elementary student handbook. The seconded it. All those in favor? Okay. K, consideration of facilities use agreements.
As part of our school safety plan, we're seeking approval of the facilities use agreement for our offsite evacuation sites. We're not mentioning where that is as part of the safety protocols. That's something that, that protects students by not mentioning that in public. But Mr. Scomp, our safety school specialist is here to further explain.
So in the event that we had to evacuate this campus, we have, we have reunification sites on campus, but in the event we had to evacuate this campus, we need a site to go to. There's an organization that we're working with. Again, we don't want to say that for student safety. They've been great to work with, really appreciate their help. But they have looked through the MOU, I believe it's in your, since it's in your packet, you've seen the, it's signed by them. They're excited to help us and we're excited to have their help. They offer everything that we need. I'm trying to be general, so no one knows what I'm talking about. But they're amazing people and they offer everything we need and we just need to have an agreement with them that if we were to need to use their facility in an extreme circumstance, we could. And so I'm just asking you guys to approve that MOU.
Anyone have questions?
Any plans for any type of reunification drills for that off-campus location?
So, um, yes. So what we look at doing is, first off, we're going to do a practice reunification. We'll do it onsite here. We're going to do it this year, do the practice one, and then we are actually hosting a countywide training for first responders and for our staff as well this year. Date on that's still up in the air. So that'll be reunification. We'll host it here. We won't do that at that facility, but we'll kind of set it up similar to that facility so that we know what would happen. But we, again, we don't want people to know where it is. So we are going to practice that process. Worked a lot this summer to nail down that process since we're going to be showing off to the counties. We're going to be the best of all the county schools when we do it too.
Okay, well, I guess my question is, is this just, when you say evacuate this camp, campus, you mean Central two or just?
So, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So it could be either. So it could be just us in the event, I'm just going to throw, in the event it was like a gas leak here, that wouldn't affect Central or for some, some of it that would just affect our building, but wouldn't affect Central, we could do that. In the event of something massive, this facility would also be able to hold Central as well. So it could be one or both.
Okay, and then what about Fillmore? So that'll be in the same or it'll be a different place? But we don't already have one.
We're working on that.
Okay.
I move to approve the offsite.
Joe made the motion to approve the facilities use agreement. Wade seconded it. All those in favor? Now, consideration of Ivy League kids agreement.
This is another add. We are seeking, continue our before and after school program with Ivy League kids. They hosted last year. We came in the middle of the year, didn't have much participation as we wanted, but now we're starting at the beginning of the year, we're hoping to get additional participation. But nonetheless, this agreement is essentially just a renewal of what we had before with the change in date.
Right, and so there's no really change of money between our corporation and them or them and us, right? I mean, it's totally separate.
Correct.
Anybody else have questions or comments, discussion? I move to approve the Ivy League kids agreement. Holly made the motion to approve the Ivy League kids agreement. Joe seconded it. All those in favor? All right. Item eight, other business. Update from Putnam County Health Department.
Thank you all for letting us.
Thank you all for letting us come to your meeting. I'm Beva Miller. I'm the school liaison with the Putnam County Health Department. And we're coming to every school board meeting just to let them know that the liaison position has changed a little bit. You guys partnered with the school liaison, every school in the county did last year, and it was a nurse. And they provided, they helped with the screenings that were required, you know, the Lions Club does those really well. But they also helped in your clinics because it was a nurse. Now, when the position came open, they decided to hire a retired educator because they wanted to help more with the curriculum. The health and wellness standards came out and the new ones came out on May thirtieth. So those teachers really didn't have a chance to look at them. This school is over. I've been able to dive into them. I'm ready to go to, you know, let the teachers have any questions or anything from day one. I can help with curriculum. I've already been sending out some emails to your principals, to your nurses. I can also help with grant opportunities that come my way. I was able to catch one of the Cloverdale counselors before they left for school and they have, they're working on a grant to sponsor a high school club. I have sent out to the nurses another grant opportunity I just learned about this week. It's training where they can train the trainers about date prevention. And it's like a five hundred dollar value that the Department of Health is offering for free. So my office manager is here to tell you about some other things that we can just offer. We're just saying these are things we can offer.
I don't know if I need to stand up there. I just wanted to give you guys my card. I'm the medical office manager at Putnam County Hospital now. And I just want to give you my card, let you know what we can offer. And we do have a new vaccine trailer. I don't know if you guys have seen it around town or not, to where we are able to take our nurses to you guys. And parents can't make it to the clinics all the time. There's work, there's extracurricular activities. Where we could have a meeting place at your school, maybe in town somewhere. We've been in the community quite a bit, at the pool, at just different events and everything, but we just want, well, not just us, but everybody to know, we're here for you guys. Anything you need, give me a call. We can make it out here on a certain day if it's better for you guys. We're just very accessible and we just want you guys to know that now. And not only just for the kids, but for the parents as well. I mean, flu shots, COVID shots, all that stuff's coming up, maybe some grandparents need to come, get some other updated immunizations. We can offer that for you guys. Very, no co-pays, the death pool, I mean, if you guys know anything about insurance, immunizations are covered at a hundred percent by most all private Medicaid, Medicare policies. So it's a good benefit. It's a real good benefit. So we just wanted to let you know we're here for you.
So if our administrators wanted to schedule you in the vaccine ban or whatever?
Vaccine trailer, yeah.
Vaccine trailer.
If you miss us.
How would they go about doing that?
Give me a call.
Okay.
Give me a call, let me know a date. Make sure we have the vaccines, whatever you want us to bring. Make sure I have it on order and we'll come, we'll come to you or wherever you want us to come. So I mean, it's just as simple as a phone call.
Okay, and then?
That's what we're offering, so.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
And so I have a question for Beva. Is the curriculum that you have, and so is that like in addition to a teacher's regular curriculum? Or can you, can she call you and say, hey, I've got a health unit on blah, blah, blah? Can you come in and do whatever?
I can help them with theirs. And this is not a curriculum I am offering. These are the Indiana State standards, right? And they've just updated and I thought it was unfortunate timing that they updated at the end of May.
Yeah, but you can help support the teachers as a resource or whatever.
Absolutely. I'm hoping to reach out to them as soon as they're in the buildings and just say, here's my, I don't know if you, as the, heard of extension, people come to you and they offer some different training. Because I've met with them. They do an awesome job with nutrition. And I'm like, I don't want to step on your toes. I said, so tell me some things that maybe you've been asked for that you don't have the resources to do, so. Allowing us to speak.
Okay, nine, superintendent's report.
Yep, I'll keep it as short as possible. So it's been a very busy summer, lots of positive activity going on. But we continue to plan for another successful school year. Just a lot of things going on right now. Last minute tie-ups, projects going on. So one of those middle school, high school project is wrapping up. We're almost done, done. Last, the last AHUs are being installed. That's the air handling units. I'll try to avoid the acronyms as much as possible. Been speaking in acronyms for the last year and a half. So the H, the air handling units, last ones are being installed, connected, put into service, which is amazing. It's already a dramatic change in the, the temperatures here throughout the summer here in the building. The locker rooms, restrooms, science rooms are all on approach for final approval. The gym is getting some last minute updates as well. They're pretty neat. There's, you'll see them coming soon. Old carpet's being removed in the back hallway and new putting in its place. We've got carpet going in all over the place right now. It's an amazing transformation. So the students and staff will see quite a transformation when school gets started here in the next few weeks, so. The central parking lot didn't go as we anticipated, which we talked about earlier tonight, but we're going to reload on that. However, the reseal and the lining project, relining project here at the middle school, high school, amazing. The entryways look great off of two thirty-one and forty. And the lining and everything just looks, it looks really fresh and ready to go. I was very impressed with that. We're excited that our schools are almost a hundred percent staffed, which is amazing at this time of year. Very, very few exceptions and right now those are, have candidates in the interview queue. I think some of them interviews even are tomorrow, so exciting times there. The new Titan cafeteria point of sale is in place and will be ready for students and parents. Soon, we're getting really good feedback on that already. Parents are excited and there's a lot more control the parents will have over student accounts, which is great. We have several last minute details to complete around the district, but students and staff should both see and feel a very significant difference when they return next month. Other than that, just wishing our Eagle football team all the best. They're scrimmaging tonight at Lucas Oil Stadium, so we're having a meeting here and they're living it up at Lucas Oil, so. Wishing them all the best, no injuries. That's it.
Does anyone have anything else that you would like to add? All right, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn. Our next regular school board meeting will be Wednesday, August ninth. That's a business meeting. However, a reminder, we have a public work session a week from today at five thirty here.
Correct.
Thank you all.